Next is United Student Leader Climate Resolution. Peter, this is yours.
Well, it's my privilege to introduce quite a fair number of students. And I believe Darlene has the names of the students who are coming in. Claire, Phil, and Forsyth are the two co-chairs in United Student Leaders. Parker Forsyth, and I see that Claire and Parker are both on. Derek Koschiko is their advisor. And then there are a number of others, Annie Philp, and Maggie Nattress. And I'll just editorialize that you've all seen the submission. I'll editorialize it, Claire and Maggie. Oh, hello. Welcome, Jackson. Thanks for coming and joining us. I'll editorialize that Annie and Maggie were the co-chairs or keynote speakers along with a quite well-known climate science scientist at the November 15, 2019 event, the Climate Change Conversations that Langley sponsored. And so, good to see you all again. And hello, Maddie. Thanks for joining the crowd. And it's over to you, Claire. I guess you're chairing this activity?
I am. Thank you, Peter. So, thank you, Councilwoman Peter Morton. Before we start, I want to quickly thank the Langley City Council members for giving us the space and time for this presentation. And I also want to specifically thank Councilmember Peter Morton for reaching out and contacting and coordinating with us over the past few months. So, thank you all, and I will pass it over to Maggie Nattress.
Thank you, Claire. We are very happy to be here. So, for those of you who did not know of us already, we are United Student Leaders, or USL, which is a coalition of students from across Woodbee Island. Our goal is to make certain that student voices are heard and also to give a platform for students to make a difference in a range of different topics. We started in October of 2019, and it was founded by myself and Annie Philp, who's another presenter here today. And our original goal was around climate change and making certain that our voices were heard and could affect it within our community. And we can continue to do that work and also work on a range of different issues. And USL is its own organization. We are outside of Southwoodby School District or any other group or club. It is completely student-run and student-led. And just for some perspective, one of our first movements was to start the drafting of the Climate Emergency Declaration that we're presenting here today. And we were originally planning on putting together multiple declarations with students from across Woodbee Island and for governments across Woodbee Island itself in various cities. So, COVID-19 about a year ago moved us from presenting in the streets protesting online. And since then, we have been contacting around 860 people through our weekly emails, have gathered support through various sign-on letters, the largest one gaining about 480 signatures. We've hosted several online events such as webinars, and these were all done through various online campaigns that Jackson will now go into more detail about. Handing it over to you, Jackson.
Yeah, so our first campaign that we'll talk about is Transforming Education, which we started last September, starting with a series of webinars about what, how we want to transform our education, and then a sign-on letter that we sent to the school that got 335 signatures. And out of that letter, we got a month in meeting with members of the school district every month and an environmental science class and an ethnic studies class, which will start in the fall. And we continue to work with the school districts, creating a more environmentally aware and equitable school district and community at large. The second campaign is banking on climate change. So, while we were protesting on the streets last year, we saw that we were only protesting and we weren't giving our supporters banks that were good environmentally. So, we contacted banks and talked to them about their environmental plans, and we are grading them on their responses, and we will send them out soon. And the last campaign is the Climate Declaration Campaign that we're presenting today. And as Maggie said, this is the year coming. And I want to especially thank Claire and Parker for all the work they put into this, and everyone really has put into this, and we really hope you approve it and hope to do it in other governments around the islands. And I'll pass it back to Maggie really quickly.
Thank you. So, personally, I was pulled into climate justice and these organizations that we are now a part of as USL for multiple reasons, one of which was the United States pulling out of the Paris Climate Agreement in 2016. That and the fact that climate crisis is one of the biggest threats to our generation and greatly affects marginalized groups disproportionately was one of the reasons why Annie and I started up United Student Leaders in order to make certain that our voices could be heard for local governments and also in general that we could make an impact and change our futures. And the other reason is that Langley is directly impacted by everything that we are speaking about here today and by the climate crisis in general. It will be affected by sea level rise as the work that Bridget is doing shows. And I think there's quite a lot that we can do to make an impact if we act now and act quickly. And I'll pass it back to you, Jackson.
Yeah, and why I got involved is really just to make would-be-a-place I want to come back to so make sure that we mitigate the effects of climate change that we're already seeing and the worsening effects in the future and just making it a more equitable place. And yeah, and I'll pass it off to Annie. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie and Jackson. I will now go into why we chose the climate crisis. Around the same time that USL was forming, Greta Thunberg was challenging everyone to take effective climate action. As students, we watched in horror as governments and corporations, large and small, did nothing to combat the climate crisis and save our future. Their lack of action inspired us to take action. We started delving into the climate crisis and quickly came to realize its connections to all human rights issues. When tackling the climate crisis, you have to understand that we aren't simply advocating for lower methane and other greenhouse gas emissions. You are demanding that corporations and governments all around the world take responsibility for the lives that have been destroyed or lost due to extreme pollution and catastrophic weather episodes. For every breath that you take, another person in the world loses their life to pollution. The United States is the number-one historic polluter. This means that cumulatively, we have contributed the most to air pollution and thus the climate crisis. According to the UN Environment Program, to prevent warming beyond 1.5 degrees Celsius, a number that is the difference between life and death, we have to start reducing emissions by 7.6% per year two years ago and then up until 2030. 12 years ago, if countries had acted on this science, governments would have needed to reduce emissions by only 3.3% each year. Each year we fail to act, the level of difficulty and cost to reduce emissions goes up. And I'll pass it off to you, Maddie.
Thank you. Okay, so I just wanted to kind of stress the fact that our home here in Langley is being directly impacted by the climate crisis. And unless immediate action is taken, this beautiful island will continue to deteriorate. The specific impacts are more thoroughly explained in our declaration, but I will explain just a few of them here. Sea level rise poses a serious threat to Langley's beachfront communities and businesses. It also accelerates coastal erosion, especially in areas where vegetation has been cleared due to shoreline development. Because of the devastating effects of climate change and deteriorating habitats, 14 of Washington's salmon and trout species are at risk of extinction. And as keystone species, the decline in their population affects orca populations and countless other species. Ocean acidification also has a major impact on local businesses such as shellfish farms, fisheries, and restaurants. The uptake of CO2 by our oceans has led to a decrease in pH and carbonate concentration, which is necessary for the survival of shellfish. And greenhouse gas emissions have also shown a significant increase from 2020 to 2021. And already, we have seen the impact it has had on wildlife, agriculture, our oceans, and people in general. Immediate action is absolutely necessary, and it's, everyone should feel responsibility for the fate of our planet. I am going to pass it off to Claire.
Thank you, Maddie. So, a question some of you may be asking is, what is a climate emergency declaration? As its name suggests, if adopted, a city declares that humanity is currently faced by a climate emergency and that the measures taken up to this point are not enough to limit the changes brought by it. Now, if a climate emergency is declared after this, a resolution and goals will be set and followed through with to mitigate climate change in a timely manner. Now, we do want to recognize the efforts that the city of Langley has made in the past to combat climate change. However, declaring a climate emergency in a timely manner is the next step to necessary to successfully continue to mitigate climate change. Climate change policy was first addressed in the United States during the early 1950s. And since then, 1,933 governments in 34 countries have committed to climate emergency declarations, concluding that this is not only a new movement, that this is not a new movement, nor is it one untested. To give a better understanding of the statistics of Washington, five governments have adopted climate emergency declarations here. Mukhltio, one of our neighboring cities, has also committed to a climate action plan, which is not a climate emergency declaration, but is still progress. When a government commits to a climate emergency declaration, it encourages other cities to do the same, which spreads the message that climate change is a current threat to humanity that must be dealt with immediately. And I'll pass it over to Parker Forsyth.
So, what actions will the city of Langley take if the declaration is actually adopted? So firstly, make a declaration stating that a climate emergency threatens our city, region, state, nation, civilization, humanity, and the natural world itself. Intend to enable, or intend to make permanent structural changes that will drive greenhouse gas emissions to net zero as quickly as possible. And this includes, but is not limited to permitting rules with the input of the planning director, mayor, public works director, and so on. Mail the resolution to neighboring cities, the county, and the state of Washington. And along with that, a strong call for immediate concurrent action within two weeks of the date of the completed resolution. Request existing committees to incorporate climate action into their charters. Charter a new dedicated climate action committee or advisory group within three months of the date of the completed resolution. And lastly, and very importantly, involve and communicate with youth in the community, including keeping them updated in what's going on and involving them in decision-making. Okay, so in conclusion, this is a very time-sensitive topic. Low warming is, our planet has already experienced irreversible damage. And if we don't make preventing climate change a top priority, it will be too late to save our planet. And just to stress the fact, we only have one planet, so we need to take care of it. And we all live in, we're so fortunate to live in beautiful Puget Sound. However, if we do not take action in interrupting climate change, then it will not be as beautiful for very long. And I will pass it off to Claire to wrap us up.
Thanks, Parker. So, both Parker and I have lived on Woodbee Island our entire lives, which is only 15 years. However, even during these few years, we have seen significant changes in our environment. Imagine at this rate of an exponentially worsening climate, what it will look like in another 15 years if sustainable action isn't taken immediately. If we do not act fast, Planet Earth will reach the point of no return, and these effects will be permanent. The next step we must take is to formally declare a climate emergency and work towards an eco-friendly city. Thank you all for your time, and that concludes our presentation. So, I will pass it back to Councilmember Peter Morton.
I guess the first thing I would do is applaud the work that you have done, and I'm going to do that the best way I can in a Zoom meeting. And I see that my fellow council members are equally impressed. So, the next step would be for the council to discuss the resolution that you had in your packet. And so, we're open for that discussion. And I guess, so I can participate in the discussion, I'm wondering if Mr. Mayor would be willing to be the moderator?
Certainly, Peter. And do we want to get back to regular business? The presentation was quite impressive that you made. Thank you for coming and meeting with council and presenting your concerns and an ordinance or proclamation to help us guide us on their way to correct issues that are going on. Do we need to return the students back to the, darling, back to the participant side or attendee side and conduct our business?
They may have some.
You want them to stay? Okay.
I'd like to invite them to stay for the discussion if that's.
You got it, Kristy. Then let's go. Go ahead. There's a, does somebody want to bring up a motion on the ordinance that they brought or the proclamation that they brought?
Well, should we make a motion and then discuss? Or, Peter, what do you think?
Generally, we make a motion, get a second, and then we hold discussion.
Okay, I'll move that we accept the resolution as presented by the students.
Accept or adopt?
Adopt.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Second, okay, discussion.
So, for, well, first of all, thank you. That was very... I hope that you'll be able to share that presentation at other venues because it was excellent and very well organized and really, I learned a lot. Thank you. I guess what I'd like to bring up with the council, and I don't, I didn't write the heading to the slide, but it was number two of the list of the actual changes we're committing to. And number two was structural, you know, it was actually the what are we going to do about it part. You know, it's, so I guess my hope, which was my hope when we had our Climate Change Summit, is that we are committing ourselves to identifying some actual actions. And so, I want to follow through on that commitment, even if it's just a couple of actual actions. So, that's my main... It's not a hesitancy. It's just, I, it's so easy for us to sign a resolution that I hope that we all are going to commit to number two on the slide I'm referring to.
Yeah, Kristy, if you go to page 27 in our packet, the last page of their resolution, it outlines the actions that they're asking council to undertake. They're pretty, starts with, intends to make permanent structural changes in our city policies, regulations, and the local economy that drive greenhouse gas emissions to net zero as quickly as possible. And then it also asks that the council form a new advisory committee on the issue of climate. Those are their asks on this, on this resolution.
Understood.
Does that answer your question? I understand what you're talking about because I wanted the same thing out of the climate action meeting that we had is, give us some specific things and steps that we need to take. But I think they're saying that their advisory council will bring those along the way. Correct?
Got it.
So, the first thing I want to say is I really appreciated driving through Freeland and seeing the back and forth between the banks over there. It's super cool that you guys recognize that the financing of a lot of the damage happens through the big five banks. And I was very appreciative of the focus that you have on that. And it's always an interesting question when you make the presentations to organizations. Ask them, where do you house your money? Do you house it in a local bank, a credit union, or are you in one of the big five banks? In fact, I asked that question earlier today of the Island Transit Executive Director and the Finance Director. And happy to report that we have our money housed in the Heritage Bank, basically, which used to be called Woodbee Island Bank. So, that's my first thing. Second thing, I really, I really think it's a great idea with the advisory group. And to answer Kristy's question, we, assuming we assemble the advisory group, the advisory group can bring to us, you know, they can conduct an audit within the city and let us know what are specific actions that they could take, that we could take. And to me, it seems that one of the first things we would think about is maybe whenever we're buying a vehicle, to consider an electric vehicle. There are manufacturers now that are putting together electric pickups. And Steve Langley has pickups. And surely, one electric vehicle might be a good demonstration project to see if they would work for us. And I know our pickups can tow some heavy stuff, but I'd like to think about that. There are pursuit-rated electric police vehicles in service in other municipalities. So, at the time that we purchase a, need to purchase a police vehicle, I hope the police chief will take a look at the electric vehicles that are available. And I really am interested to hear what the advisory group, assuming we pass this, could bring to us. It would be creative. Thank you.
Other questions, comments from council?
Well, I also want to.
Have you reviewed the specific gas they have in the resolution? Go ahead. Yes. Go ahead, Dominique.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you very much. It was an excellent presentation. And I know that Bridget has been working very hard to update our comprehensive plan to include climate goals. I do think that it's good to have an advisory committee that is looking at all of our work and keeping that in mind. We get so focused on getting the job done. And in the finance part of things, that we oftentimes lose sight of other opportunities. An advisory group would have the advantage that it could start gathering information and enhancing some of the things that Craig said. And I'm sure they have other ideas, too. And keeping their eye on, for instance, lighter solar panels so that maybe we wouldn't have to rebuild the city hall's roof before we put them on and things like that, and what other municipalities are doing. So, anyway.
I'd be curious if Thomas has something to say. I have a few things in my list.
No, I have, I have nothing to add.
Okay, well, I've taken a pretty deep dive on the proposed resolution. I have some editorial suggestions, and I would think that we, to form an advisory group, as I remember with both the Pwac and the DSR, it's not a trivial thing for us to do, and it requires resources and city commitment and a staff license. And so, those are the issues that I think we'll have to determine whether we can do that in the period that has been specified. I think we can if we make it urgent. I've taken the liberty of contacting the same climate scientist who accompanied Maggie and Annie as keynote speakers in November of 2019. And he is more than willing to serve on an advisory group. I presume the advisory group would be the equivalent of an ad hoc committee by city rules. Is that right, Jim?
Yeah, unless you want to go ahead and pass enabling ordinance that creates such a committee as a permanent basis. So, if you want to do that, then that's like DRB or PAB. Those are all have enabling ordinances that create them.
I think we'd want to know more before we created a permanent group. But if we start with a, an ad hoc group, they can run for a pretty good period of time. And then we'll know exactly what the parameters are, would be if it became a permanent group, don't you think?
Yeah, ad hoc's always a good way to start.
Yeah, because we run into problems just with everybody having bandwidth. I mean, at some point, we keep up at this rate, everybody's going to have to be on two committees, at least. So, we have to think about that, and the bandwidth of staff, I think, is another issue. So, I think we need to have discussions about those.
So, the last thing I have is, I noticed that the last of the, therefore, be it resolved, is ensure that the city involves youth. And so, I do have a request for the United Student Leaders as to whether we might get a couple of members from USL to be actually a part of that working group. So, it's not incumbent upon us to brief you periodically. You'd be an integral part of the process. Maggie, you're muted.
I think that there is quite a lot that we can do to discuss exactly how students can be involved. I know that if it's a possibility for a student to be in the committee, that would be amazing. Specifically, I know Claire and Parker put a lot of work and effort into putting this climate emergency declaration together. So, I'd love to hear from them on that. But anyway, that you can be held accountable by youth and that we can continue to be within the loop and hearing any updates is incredibly important for us and everything that we've done to get this to you and all that we do around actions when it comes to climate change. So, Claire, Parker, anything to add there?
No, yeah, Maggie, thank you. I 100% agree with you. That would be amazing to be a part of that committee and to continue to discuss this with you all and be a part of the resolution and mitigation. So, yeah, thank you. Parker?
Yeah, I completely agree. To be given that opportunity would be amazing. And I'm sure that at least I would be willing to and would love to join that committee.
And my other ask would be of Derek, who, and I know that everybody has a bandwidth problem. I know the students do something. This is not your day job. And so, I respect the fact that you also have bandwidth problems, as do we. But Derek, would you be willing to be a part of this?
Thank you for the invitation. I would be, if offered, I would absolutely accept the opportunity to be a part of such an ad hoc group. Thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Mayor, would you confirm that you don't actually have to be a resident of Langley to serve on an ad hoc committee for Langley?
Since it's, there's no enabling ordinance, Peter, there's no description of residency requirement for an ad hoc committee. So, you can pick anybody you want.
How about you, Mr. Mayor?
I'd be, I'd be proud to serve.
Okay.
Well, Craig's got his hand up.
Right. Dominique mentioned something important, and that was that we have done some work in the comprehensive plan. And Bridget, could you just kind of give us a 50,000-foot view of what the comprehensive plan does, maybe what it is first and what has already happened in it?
Well, I mean, the comprehensive plan is a pretty, it is a pretty high-level document in terms of, you know, policy related to wide variety matters. There are policies in there that recommend that we do some climate action planning for mitigation and adaptation. And yeah, it was mentioned, you know, the work around sea level rise. So, that's a pretty significant piece because the state doesn't currently require it, nor do they have much in the way of guidelines to assist in providing guidance for local governments who want to incorporate sea level rise into their SMPs. So, we're still kind of going through that process, so that's somewhat significant. And I mean, some of the work that we're doing in terms of the infill housing and some of those pieces are also very consistent with, you know, in terms of land use planning, it's pretty key in terms of keeping, being able to keep greenhouse gas emissions low. You know, that's the nice thing about Langley being a small community is that we can, by encouraging alternative modes of transport and encouraging people to walk, cycle, and so on, you know, we're able then to reduce some of our... We're, we're able then to, to reduce some of our, our, um, carbon footprint. Um, but there's certainly, yeah, I mean, the, the, there's policy scattered out through the different elements. Land use, transportation, public works. Um. Sustainability, um, but, um. Yeah, to do, I think to do it justice, it, it, it does. Um, the city may want to consider preparing some kind of, you know, action plan. Um, and that of course requires some commitment to, to budget and so on to, to. To under, to, to work on such a project. Um, so I, I mean, I think, you know, certainly as a community, we're well suited to, to do this work and we have the, the support in the, in the comp plan to do just that.
And I think the city has undertaken a number of measures to try and reduce our carbon footprint and those can all be collected and memorialized as well. I mean, the, the conversion to the L E D. Streetlights are, are, uh, indoor ductless, yeah, heat system, all of those kinds of things are, are contributing where we have authorities and responsibilities and budget to do it. We're. We're making choices that are environmentally friendly. We also coordinate with the other municipalities. Uh, we're the only municipality that is a, a, a member of the P S E green energy, uh, activity. We're receiving, um. Power from the wind fields and for when the solar fields come on, that will be our power that comes to the city. So. I mean, there's a lot of areas that we're, we're taking individually initiatives by department, but they need to be collected and memorialized. So we can see what we are doing in the total, I believe.
Uh, Tim, would you, uh, do me the favor of explaining to the students? Uh, the relationships with the different county, uh, governments, uh, talk about the council of governments and what it does and how it functions, because they did make a. Some mention in their presentation outreach to other municipalities.
Yeah, there are, there are, uh, there is a, a body that, that meets monthly. It's called the Council of Governments. I happen to be the chairman right now. And it is, uh, it involves all of the municipalities, us, Coopville and Oak Harbor, as well as the county commissioners and the two port commissioners. So it covers. Most of the governmental entities that are on, uh, Whidby Island and Comeno. So, and the C O G has, uh, taken a stance towards. Um, environmental improvement. There's a discussion of doing a carbon footprint. Uh, analysis of each of the individual municipalities and then we do share, uh, areas where we are. Making, uh, progress in terms of environmental impact. I always think they're sick and tired of hearing about it, but I am always telling them about our solid waste management program that generates no solid waste. We don't haul anything to the landfill and. In the Langley sewer treatment plant. I don't know if you're aware of that. Everything goes out in compost. We don't, we don't haul to landfill at all. And we're the only municipality that does that on the island. So I'm always telling them about it. They don't like to hear it, but I tell them anyways, but. So I think, uh, an advisory committee would be a, a good idea and, and one of their first tasks would be to kind of. Uh, take a news reporter's view of the city and its activities and see where there are accomplishments and where there are areas where we can make improvements and report that back to the council.
So, um. To adopt a resolution, do we need a first and second reading?
No, just one.
I think it would be worthwhile, um, tabling this for, uh, to, uh, one or two. Uh, council meetings so that I can, or we can work with Monica to explore what sort of budgetary impact this might have. I'm. Saying that before she reminds me to say that.
And. We've already, oh, sorry, we've already made a first and a second. Sorry for interrupting you, but we're in discussion.
Yes.
On the motion, yeah. On the motion to adopt.
And he's recommending we table it.
All right, okay, we can adopt it and we can amend it. Um.
Well, I was gonna say, Peter, uh, maybe instead of that we have an amendment that we're, we're adopting it for research. So that, uh, the appropriate actions and language are, are in place so that we can have a full, proper resolution. That would be my amendment to your original motion.
Uh, who's second?
I did, but I, I'm, I, so I'm a little confused. I'd like, I'd like to, um. Make it, make a clean adoption and then know that we are going to have logical. Responsibilities to carry out. Um, action items like budget discussions and ad hoc committee discussions will follow. So what are, what were you, I, I was confused with what you and Thomas were suggesting. Sorry.
Well, I, I think there's merit to adopting this and, and driving that stake in the ground. And then. One of the earliest things that the, that, that the first action item will be to form the, uh, the committee. And one of the first action items that committee could do would be to look, uh, very closely at all of the language in the, uh. A resolution and determine, uh, exactly how we're going to execute. And if some, uh. If some revisions are required, we bring them back to, to council. So that would allow us to go ahead and vote favorably on this, uh. Uh, in this motion that's currently on this, on the floor.
What do you think, Thomas?
Yeah, see, and I, and I'm hesitant to have us pass anything that isn't in, isn't properly written or in a proper form, because. We've done that in the past and it's come to bite us, the, bite us back. So.
Okay.
I would much rather that we take this draft resolution, we have it reworked and formatted properly. Have, have it go through the attorney's office. Make sure what's laid out is actually stuff we can legally do. And if not, do whatever we need to do to, to correct that. And then we pass an actual functioning and fully vetted resolution.
That makes sense to me.
Is that the motion now?
Annie has her hand up.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Um, no, I was just wondering, uh, I've heard a lot of talk about, um, going over the resolution and, uh. You know, maybe changing a few things or, um, looking over it and then reevaluating it. Um, are there any things that you all have noticed right away that are, that need to be discussed or reevaluated? I guess I'm just a little bit confused as to. What that would look like and, um, what those, uh, evaluations may be in the future.
Annie, I've, uh, gone through it, uh, pretty carefully and I have a few suggestions on language that are editorial. And there's a couple of places where there is substantive changes I'd like to have you consider. Um. Uh, one of them was that it does need to go through the attorney's office and the attorney may have, uh. Editorial changes as well. For legal reasons. And so those are things that Thomas has raised that are, are important. But I can. Meet with, uh, you and, uh, and Claire and Parker. And show you what suggestions I have made. I'm trying to think of what is the procedure that we should follow here. It's kind of like having an ad hoc committee forum for the ad hoc committee before we, uh, do it, but it's a complicated document.
Yeah, you can. No, we had to run resolutions by the attorney.
Well, this particular one has a, um, has some obligates the city to do, uh, some things and, um. Maybe we don't need to run it by it.
When we, when we created the enabling resolution for the D S R, I don't think there was any, um, attorney review. I can't think of a reason why we'd need attorney review in this case.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay to, if we, if there's act, if there's going to be some actual work done on it in the next. Two weeks that you feel is really necessary. I, 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 I mean, I hope that, um. U S L, the U S L team knows that we're serious and we're not just like putting it off to.
One, one, one res, one revision I would like to suggest is that the last paragraph that would be at results. Um, be, be replaced by something that says that youth will be a part of the commission. Rather than will be kept informed. So that's an example.
Maggie has her hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Um, one thing I do think that we need to drive home is that this is very much, um. An acknowledgement by everyone here, um, and by the Langley City Council that the climate crisis is important to you. Um, and that we will have, um, changes that we made because you accept the climate crisis as something that is, uh. An emergency and something that you will be targeting directly in order to have a great impact on it. So. I think we're definitely open to changes and anything that you do wish to change, we'd love to have a discuss, a discussion around, um, in more detail. Um, and we'd love to sit down with anyone who has specific worries or concerns. Um, but I don't know exactly how, um. Else we want to move forward with, um, besides just accepting this and then possibly continuing on and making more adjustments as we go within the committee itself, for example. So Annie, if you want to add on to that.
Yeah, no, I completely agree with everything that Maggie has just stated. I think that if there are revisions that need to be made, um, you know, that is where we can all sit down and make those revisions. Um, but just also pointing out the fact that the climate crisis already has enough urgency on it. It's not a matter of this city council applying urgency to the climate crisis. It is already there. It is simply an acknowledgement of that urgency. And yes, it does come with, um, the creation of an advisory committee. That, uh, you know, if acknowledging the climate crisis is what we are wanting to do and the urgency that it comes with. Um, then that is definitely something that needs to happen. Um, so yeah, just putting that out there as well.
Yeah, I, I don't see, uh, if. Council is ready to create and then listen to an advisory committee. Um. Who's on it can be determined later. It doesn't have to be done tonight. And all of the things that they're talking about are. Already included in our comprehensive plan. So that's already in place. All they're asking for is that we say that we declared an emergency and want to take more earnest action on the, on the, uh, issue. So I would, I would think you could pass it now and you can have a discussion on the D S R. I mean, not on the D S R, but on the, uh, climate committee ad hoc. Uh, membership, you do that later. It says within three months established, I think.
Well.
The language, so.
All I would say that is that. Aspects of this, um, could be hardened. I agree with Peter and. That if we want to mail this to other municipalities and have them, uh. You know, just feel, anyway, it would feel, uh. I think it would be more complete. With a few edits also.
Okay, so, so then honoring Pete, Thomas and Peter, can we, um, amend our motion to, um. Move this to, um, to a, uh, an editorial phase. That will be collaborative between Peter and U S L and.
And staff.
And staff and that, um. A final resolution will come back to us.
Yeah.
Within. Thirty days. Is that possible, a possible motion?
Could be sooner, but yeah.
I, I think the principal ask though is they're asking council to declare a climate emergency. That should be the number one thing that you're deciding whether you're going to declare climate emergency. And then the resolution is, is a mechanism that supports the actions that the city's willing to take, uh, around that climate emergency. That can be editorialized. You're. You can determine your ad hoc committee membership and all those kinds of things, but I think they're asked tonight, if I'm. Correct, is that council recognize that there's a climate emergency and declare it as such?
Then we would just do that and not this whole resolution?
Well, you could do that and then say there will be a resolution following that, that, uh, outlines what the city's approach will be. And he. Gives time to, to take a look at it, editorialize, talk with the, the students about changes that could be made in the resolution and then issue the resolution.
Peter?
Annie.
Um, yeah, thank you. I think I would also love to hear what Claire and Parker, um, have to say about this, but I think that it would be best, um. If we do maybe put the resolution into some form of editorial, I suppose, and, uh, to be able to work with you, Peter, and staff on, um, hardening it and. Uh, maybe adjusting a few things. Sounds like a great idea. Um, but Tim, like you said, uh, declaring a climate emergency tonight would, um, be ideal. And I will pass it off to Claire and Parker. Yeah, thank you, Annie. Um, I do agree with, with what you said, Annie, and I want to reiterate that this is technically a draft resolution. Um, so the main point of us being here tonight is to have you all declare a climate emergency and then I think our. Kind of thought was that the committee could, um, help to finalize the resolution and the steps that. The city council will take and the committee will take in the future. Um. That's kind of what I thought. I don't know if that's the right protocol, but, um. If, if so, then I think, yeah, as Annie said, tonight would be, it would be awesome to see if, if that could be declared. Um, but then again, I'm not sure about the protocol. So, um. Parker, if you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'm in the same boat as Claire. Just, it would be great to, um, get emergency declarations tonight, but of course we are open to, um. An editorial phase and we will work with you guys on that.
Couldn't hear you.
I think she was seconding Claire's, uh.
Okay.
Okay, well, let's, let's take it one step at a time. Uh, can we unmake the motion that we've made?
Sure.
And let's make another motion and I'll make it. I move that the city of Langley declare. A climate emergency and I'm speaking slowly because somebody's taking notes. And follow up that declaration.
With a.
With a refinement of this resolution.
I like that. Yeah.
When you say I like that, is that the same as a second?
I second that.
I was gonna just, Peter, maybe we should say with, we follow up this declaration with an enabling resolution.
Okay, an enabling resolution, uh, Monica, based on the draft submitted by the United Student Leader.
There you go. All right, and the second still stands, um, Dominique?
Still stands.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, thank you so much for your presentation. You got your ass.
Wait a minute, I, I'd like some names now. Um, I, I, I know who I can work with at United Student Leaders if I'm the, uh. Signed council member to take the next step, but I would like one other council member to partner with me and I'm. Would like to know if Bridget is available to be the staff contact.
Well, thanks, Peter. And, you know, this is work that, um. I, I really think is important, you know, hence, um. Introducing it into the comprehensive plan, incorporating it in there is really important. I think though, staff wise, we need to kind of look at. Um. At my role, just because I'm pretty tapped out. So I, you know, I don't know what it would look like in terms of time, which is really unfortunate because it's something that I would like to do.
What I would first see is that we would, uh, send you a draft, uh, draft, uh, version two point O. Just to have you read and flag anything you think we need to.
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah, that's not a problem.
Go, Annie.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine. Not a problem. I'd like to.
Yeah.
Okay, I got my orders.
Very good. And you already talked to Derek as well?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so I think we, you pretty much know who your membership's going to be. So we'll get it put together. Good. All right. Thank you so much for your presentation. It was very well done and, uh. Uh, again, as you approach the age eighteen, I want to put another little thought in your head. If you're a Langley citizen, you might want to run for public office in Langley.
You should go to your teachers and demand, uh, academic credit for this work.
Think, think about running for office. There you go. Okay, thank you.